We're going to call this meeting, November 29th, meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, to order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselor Viera.
Present.
And Counselor DiMedeiras, it will be late, I believe.
Yes, just to note, as most of you probably know, the council president works at St. Anne's Hospital as a nurse, and they have had, unfortunately, an influx of COVID patients, not on her floors, but they have to help out the rest. And so she's stuck at the hospital right now. She does hope to be able to be here tonight, but she sends her regrets for not being here right now. We do have a few quick items of business carried over from our last council meeting that we'll attend to before the public hearing. Consent agenda, A, approval of license renewals, non-advertised, December 1, 2021 to November 30, 2022. Victualling license renewals, Plouf, 1, Plouf Gastronomy, 2490 Main Road. 2, All Fresh Donuts Corporation doing business as Sip &amp; Dip, 2, Crandall Road. 3, All Fresh Donuts Corporation doing business as Sip &amp; Dip, 499 Main Road. Does any counselor wish to take anything off the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor Janik. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item number 5, Board of Licensing, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Advertised public hearing for license renewals, December 1, 2021 to November 30, 2022. A, Petroleum Storage License Renewals, item number 1, Tiverton Sun, 497 Main Road. I will open the public hearing on the license renewal for Tiverton Sun.
It's not advertised.
It's not advertised, oh, so we don't have to open the public hearing, okay. Any discussion? And I don't see George here, so... If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor Janik. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And if I don't see your hands well, let me know. If at all during this time you can't hear us, because we know sometimes we come ask, but these mics are pretty good, it makes it more challenging, but we do appreciate that everyone is following the rules of the school and wearing a mask tonight. So next on our agenda is the public comment and discussion on the proposed Tiverton Code of Ordinance, zoning ordinance, Article 24, Solar Energy Systems. Yeah, that's 24. So just before we start on this, we appreciate all of the comments that we have received from various folks by email. I know some have had phone conversations with folks, letters sent to us. They've all been very informative. We appreciate the work of the planning board in doing their statutorily required review. So at this stage of the process, it's an opportunity for us to hear from the public on the proposal before us, and please note that that is exactly what it is. It is a proposal. You know, speaking for myself, but I think I can speak for the rest of this council is we do take our time and be as deliberative as we can in a process, as long as we move things along. And I don't think anyone has rushed to judgment on any aspect of this. It's a proposed ordinance before us. We look forward to your comments. If you've provided us written comments, then, you know, we ask that you summarize those. We want to hear from everyone. If someone says exactly what you want to say before you get up, you know, if you can just say, "I agree with Mike," you know, then feel free to say that. If there are key aspects that you want to address, feel free to do that. I'm going to ask that folks stick to about a five-minute delivery of your comments, and we'll keep track of that as best as we can. And did you have a...
Mike, you might want to add, this is not the official public hearing, this is a public hearing, but this is not the final passage.
Yes, yes, thank you. And while this is a public hearing, it is not, it is not our intent to make any final decisions tonight. Again, we're going to take the comments provided, the information provided, and then decide how to go from there. In all likelihood, there will probably be another draft that we'll seek other comments on, similar to what we've been doing with the Airbnb, I'm sorry, the short-term rentals. You have... Bill, can you grab that from her?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we get started with the...
We feel pleased that signed up, but the actual, if it could sign...
Down there.
...when they...
Sure, certainly. Hang on one second, Counselor. I do have three names who signed up already, which, you know, we'll take in that order, but certainly that does not limit anyone else from speaking. What we do ask, so that we have a record, is you print your name on the public comment signup sheet that's on the podium when you come up. Thank you. Yes, Counselor?
Okay, so before we get started, I want to make a comment and a suggestion, if the solicitor allows it. I too have received a lot of comment from the public on this, and there's a lot of confusion around what the purpose of tonight is and what our purpose going forward is intended to be. To that end, I would like to suggest that this committee, that this council, commit to continuing with public comment and a workshop or two. And to that end, I would like to make a motion that we commit to establishing a committee which would consist of one town council member, the planner, at least one, maybe two, planning board members, our solicitor, and at least three members of the public.
So Counselor, I can't allow that because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
For tonight. Certainly, if you want to bring that up at one of our next meetings, you're certainly welcome to.
Next meeting.
Thank you. So I will open up the public comment section, portion of this meeting, unless any other counselors had any comments beforehand. Seeing none, Carol Herman.
Good evening, Carol Herman, Main Road. I'd like to start by thanking you for letting us share our concerns with you this evening and for listening with an open mind. I also want to add, before I begin, that I base many of my comments on the recommendations from Scott Millar of Grow Smart Rhode Island. The stated purpose of the proposed ordinance is to, quote, "minimize impacts on environmental, scenic, natural, and historic resources." The current language fails to adequately do that. These are some of the changes I'd like to see. I'd like to see all ground solar arrays, even small ones, barred from all residential zones. They cause a drop in property values for neighbors and are unsightly. If allowed, the setbacks need to be increased, as recommended by Grow Smart Rhode Island. Mr. Millar notes, "Towns in rural areas have used 200 to 300 feet for setbacks in residential zones or for development that abuts a residential zone." And he adds, "The setback also typically requires pre-existing natural vegetation to be retained. To the greatest extent possible, please encourage solar energy facilities on the closed landfill and brownfield sites, as well as on commercial and industrial buildings or in industrial zones. They should be sited on already developed and disturbed locations and not on open farmland or on forested land. Losing farmland and forests has a huge negative impact on Tiverton's environmental, scenic, natural, and historic resources, as well as on our quality of life. The loss of forest in particular is also counterproductive to achieving Rhode Island's climate change goals. Protect forested land as much as you can. Little Compton limits forest clearing to 20,000 square feet in their ordinance. Prohibit altogether the siting of large solar arrays on farmland and prime agricultural soil. We have already lost a 300-year-old farmhouse because Amoresco demolished it rather than allowing it to sit undisturbed next to their solar arrays for 20 years, the length of time they planned to use the property. We have also sacrificed acres and acres of irreplaceable old growth forest to the Brayton Solar Project. Tiverton can't afford any more losses such as these." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Next I have is Chip Lawrence.
Let's see, I've spoken to you before. I want to repeat the point that climate change and sea level rise will have a major impact on Tiverton, and that if the United States doesn't lead, we will not limit CO2 on this earth. Rhode Island needs to make those contributions, and so does Tiverton. So while a number of the points that are made here, to make buffer zones, to protect pollinators, and so on, are all good things to do, and I agree with them, I want to point out that there is the balance between imposing restrictions and making our contribution to limit CO2. So we got to consider that balance. I argue that that's an important thing to do. The one issue here that's not clear to me is item F.
What item was that again?
Item, at first it's on Section 6 on medium and large-scale panel or facilities. Power and communication lines running between solar panels, and here's the key part, to off-site electrical distribution systems shall be buried underground. It's not clear to me what that means. Does that mean that whoever puts one in has to bury it underground all the way to the substation on Route 24?
That's how I would interpret that.
Excuse me?
But that's how I would interpret that.
I see. Well, that will, I, while I'm no expert in what it costs to bury those things, I'd expect it to be a major cost in many places where there's open fields, where we could put solar panels without cutting a single tree, mostly on the east-south part of the town. It would, I expect, be a really major cost to connect that underground line all the way up to near Route 24.
So what I can't say, Chip, is whether or not that offsite, because I'm not an intellectual expert.
Yeah, me either.
We would have to have somebody look at that, whether that would mean to a telephone pole or some other mechanism. So we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, yeah, right. And that needs to be worked out, I agree. If it's a large facility, then they're going to need more than the kind of residential line that we're familiar with. So that's one important point. And hopefully, so I'll come back when there's another one of these, and hopefully by then we'll know what that means. Yep, okay. And then I think there's plenty of open land, and I think that, given this balance, putting this up on certainly vacant open land is cold for. And while it's nice to see the cows out in the field, I will point out that they make methane 80 times more powerful than CO2. So if we should place, if we should place a facility where corn is now growing, that feed cows, and put a solar panel system there, we will do double, more than double, on placing the facility where such agricultural practice that feeds cows don't take place. My last point has to do with trees. I hope we don't have to cut any, but I also know that climate change is going to affect many species besides us, many things besides our streets. Essentially, all species will be affected by it, all the things that live in the woods that I have the pleasure of walking through almost every day, and all those trees are going to be affected by climate change. So again, I'd like to protect them all. On the other hand, I understand that climate change will have an impact, major impact on them, and we will lose the oak, and I expect the holly, as if we don't do something about controlling climate. So I thank you much for your attention, and I look forward to finding out what that particular point...
Thank you, Chip, for pointing that out. I have one question for you, just from your other presentations and discussions you've had with the council. Can you remind us of your credentials?
Yes.
You're a professor emeritus at Brown?
No, I'm a professor of research at Brown.
Okay.
In applied math, and I have studied applied math, the climatology for the last 15 years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I just ask, can the speakers remove their mask? They do allow it during the school committee meetings.
Do they?
Yeah, it's just really hard to hear.
That's fine, then. If, while you speak, you, I didn't realize that. Can remove, just pull your mask down, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
The next person on this list, before we go to the more general audience, is David Carden.
David Carden, 4100 Main Roads. Good to see you all again. I know we've spoken a few times before. I want to begin by saying that I also had a kind of puzzlement and confusion concerning the agenda this evening, because it was puzzling to me that we were actually going to be discussing a proposed ordinance that the planning board had unanimously said did not comply with the town plan. I was heartened by the comments of councilperson Burke concerning a process that I think would be appropriate for purposes of determining what, developing an ordinance that would be compliant with the town, town plan. I want to set that aside for a moment, however, because I, the thing I really want to stress more than anything else, and I've complimented the council several times in terms of taking up this important issue, I can't think of anything right now that brings together so many important issues for this community. You deal with so many important things, it's maybe not for me to say, but this proposed ordinance, or any ordinance, it's a solar ordinance, deals with energy, which we know is going to be critical in the years ahead, particularly with the possibility of cyber attacks, as they will come, and they surely will come, I can say. It also deals with agriculture and food stresses, and we know what's going to happen with regard to that in the years to come. It deals with the environmental, the general quality of water, and we've heard before about the contribution that forests and grasslands make to the water quality in town. It's also something that actually deals with the aesthetics of the town, and we are privileged in this town and have the kind of vistas and the, and the landscape that would be the envy of many people. So I think it's important for the council just to take pause for a moment and see how comprehensive this issue really, how comprehensive and cross-cutting it really is with regard to the things that affect life quality in Tiverton. All the more reason why it's important to give this council the tools in order to make proper decisions in the future concerning, and for the planning board to make proper decisions in the future. There's been suggestions that perhaps special use zoning could be used for that purposes, but that would not have the guidance that would be necessary in terms of balancing the various considerations going forward that are so comprehensively important to what we need to be doing going forward. So the comprehen, pardon me, the town plan is not aspirational. It's not a lot of easy words talking about what a beautiful landscape we have. It's a plan, and for that reason, it's important that the ordinance comply with that plan. In order for it to comply with the plan, we need someone to sit down, or a group to sit down, as, as councilperson Burke said, to sit down and say, what does comply with this plan? What do we need in order to deal with all these many issues? Water, forests, agriculture, energy, anesthetics, and I'm leaving some out for sure. Species diversity is, of course, a really critical matter, and I think all of you, and I'm not, I'm not going to stand up here and start talking about the various species deprivation that we thought, but I haven't seen too many birds recently, and I've been, you know, the fact is, we have, we are having an impact. There is an impact now on the species in this community as a consequence of many factors outside of our control, but this issue is inside our control. We can, we can do what we can to encourage the kind of diversification in terms of, or the species protection that we really need. So I, I just want to say that it's important to see how big this is. This is not something that is small, that can be written in a room by someone that thinks hard, that thinks deeply about a subject. This requires the kind of thing, I believe, that councilperson Burke said, let's get the right people in a room and sit down with all of these issues in front of us and decide, how do we deal with all of them with regard to our communities so that we accomplish the objectives of the town plan, which I might say, as my last comment, is a very, very comprehensive document extraordinarily well done, and I'm certain some of you were involved in that, and I, my last comment is to congratulate you for having such, done such a good job on the plan. Now it's time to do a good job on the ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carden. I just want to clarify that, while I appreciate the credit given to me, it was actually Counselor Edwards who had the suggestion about a committee, so...
One of the wonderful things I learned by being in the government is nobody who really deserves the credit often gets it, and important thing, and actually, that's really quite important, because it doesn't matter who gets the credit, so long as we get it right.
Yeah. I also want to clarify the misunderstanding, I guess, that has been mentioned a couple times. So when we sent this to the planning board back in September, based on the statute, there's a timeframe. Planning board had, I believe it was 45 days, to give us back a report, and from that date that we sent it to them, and then we had, I want to say it was 60 or 65 days from that date to set a public hearing. So this is part of that process. That does not mean, as I said before, that this is the be-all, the end-all to that process, but this is part of that process. Thank you. So I have no one else on my list. If someone, please, Louise, come on up, please write your name down on that sheet there so we have it for the record.
Okay, I, thank you very much. I am more than delighted to hear the comment that I can take my mask off. Woo, I can breathe. One thing I would like to say at the outset, that Councilman Edwards, I think your proposal, albeit was ruled out of order, is really the right thing for the council to undertake and do. And I suspect that people behind me would take that and say they would agree with that. There are a number of issues, and I would also make this modest suggestion, that the committee should have more public members than not. I think that would give it credibility, and I don't think that the administration representatives should be a, those who have a vested interest in just seeing this draft proposal pass. I think that, quite frankly, as an ordinance reconciling a number of issues is a complete So my first comment would be to certainly your earliest opportunity, nor do I think the town solicitor should be a member of a committee. He is the town solicitor and an advisor. He's not a voting member, and he's not a resident of this town. And I think that is important as we go along. Certainly, what a committee can do is really set forth and invite some experts down who have been dealing with these issues. Our draft ordinance was written several years ago. In many ways, it just doesn't fit what we need to do and should do. Those that open up communities like Exeter have had a host of litigation, conflict, and the last thing this council needs is conflict on an ongoing basis, or more lawsuits. Surely that is not what the intent is. I'm not going to stand here and go and talk about flaws, but there are, there are a number of flaws in that existing ordinance. What's a plan development? Who gets it? Does it require a public hearing? No. There's a host of those things. I think they're all irrelevant, and I think we need to start anew and look at the issues before us. Much of our energy needs are going to come from offshore turbines. That seems to be where the state resources has come out, that's in their publications. Towns like Tiverton should concentrate on solar development in already disturbed areas. The quarries, the heaven's sakes, we have a number of them. Brownsfield, we have a surprising number there, too. Commercial areas, but I do think commercial areas should be protected, because some of the commercial areas are very close to residential areas, and we do not wish to devalue residences in this town. So I think some of those issues, we need to encourage place development where it's appropriate. The industrial park, although I understand from the rumor mill, there's other plans for the industrial park these days. But I must say, I really do think the way to do is to get some Exeter advice, and it's not going to happen here. You're not going to take a roomful of people and draft an ordinance. It doesn't work. It's going to require some hard thinking and some choices to be made to present to the council, and there should be a time factor for it. Does it take two months? Does it take two and a half months? But to get on with it. And frankly, in closing, I will say, you know, when you advertise a public hearing, I don't have to lecture you on this, but it is towards a specific ordinance. And when you amend a zoning ordinance in this town, in any town in the state, there has to be full advertising of it. Now, I understand there's no vote required here, but when you do that, you'd have to follow the process of amending a zoning ordinance, and it's quite elaborate. Your town solicitor can tell you that. But when you talk about a public hearing, amending the zoning ordinance, there are certain things that have not been followed here.
Sure, thank you. You are absolutely correct. This was not that hearing. This is not the statutory required hearing that the council wanted to have, because they're not ready to go forward with an ordinance. They wanted to get feedback on the proposed ordinance that the planning board reviewed and the, and the planning department put together with, obviously, our help, my help. But we're not, we're not at that step yet, but they just wanted to, because they were such concerned about it, they just wanted to have a old-fashioned, non, you know, old-fashioned public hearing to let people comment on what has been proposed. But this is by no, no means would require, complies with the statutory requirements for a change of the zoning ordinance. You are absolutely correct, and it's not the intention of the council to, to count this as a zoning hearing as required by the statute. That would have to be advertised for, I think, 14 days and all the other good stuff that you, that you know probably better than anyone. So, but this was just a kind of an old-fashioned town hall... So, but this was just a kind of an old fashioned town hall, come, come to speak to what you think about this ordinance as proposed so far.
Well, perhaps it could have been a little more clear in your agenda item, and I won't really belabor that, but I think in the future, statements saying, "We'd like your comments" on what should go into a zoning ordinance, would have obviated some confusion. So, there's a lot of work to be done. I'm not going to stand here and say, hey, you got to amend this, this, and this, but you need to start afresh. Mr. Edwards, you are right on the right track to go, and I hope the council will support you unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I make a call up? And herein... Your, your mic.
Come on. I'll pull this down.
Pull it closer.
What was just mentioned here is some of what I referred to earlier as the confusion. So, the posted Secretary of State website agenda says that we're going to have public comment and discussion on the proposed Tiverton ordinance. No votes, none of that. The confusion is that on the town website, on the first page, it said this was a public hearing. Well, if you use the public hearing in that we are hearing the public, that's what we're doing. It's not the public hearing that you may be used to where votes were taken, where decisions are made. So, I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you. Stu, state your name, please.
Yes. Stu Hardy, Stuart Hardy, 51 Summer Field Lane, and I'm here just to speak for myself as a private citizen. I'm very pleased to have this opportunity, and I think this is a great way to start the process that we really need to start because I support solar energy, and I'd like to see our solar ordinance that was repealed a couple of years ago replaced with something that, that really safeguards Tiverton's small-town and scenic qualities while, while also being consistent with our comprehensive plan. I'd just like to make four quick suggestions for improvements on the draft ordinance that is before us all tonight, and I'd also like to call your attention to some really good written resources that I think can really help particularly the committee that Councilor Edwards is suggesting be put into effect. My first suggestion is this. The draft ordinance is not currently supported by language in the Tiverton Comprehensive Plan, and it really needs to be. We really need to have comprehensive community plan language that spells out all of the key elements of a solar ordinance and the issues with respect to size, location, lot coverage, setbacks, environmental concerns, safety issues. All of that needs to be in our comprehensive plan, and at the present time, there's only one very brief reference to solar panels, and that's in chapter five, the land use chapter on page 58. And it simply says that ugly utility structures such as solar panels, wind towers, communication towers, and a whole host of other ugly utility structures, that those structures be shielded and landscaped for aesthetic reasons. So, this little reference, this two-word reference to solar has everything to do with aesthetic considerations and everything to do with design standards. It is not sufficient to support what we're trying to do tonight and get, and get language, statute put into our zoning. So, we need comprehensive plan language that will address all of the major issues. That's my first point.
So, Stu, can, just to clarify, if I'm understanding you, Stu up here. You correctly, you're suggesting that we can't do this until we amend the comprehensive plan?
Absolutely, and, and let me tell you exactly why.
So, we can't, we have to amend the comprehensive plan first, is what you're saying?
The Rhode Island Division of Statewide Planning has a publication. It's called Comprehensive Plans and Solar Energy Systems, and let me read, let me give you a quote from it. It states that "any community's solar ordinance should be," and I quote, "in accordance with the goals laid out in the Community Comprehensive Plan and the State Guide Plan." So, first comes the plan, then comes the ordinance language in the zoning. Secondly, the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources has a policy paper entitled Solar Siting Information, and here it is. Solar Siting Information, Office of Energy Resources, these are recent publications, and, and it says, Rhode Island General Laws Title 45, Chapter 22.2, and that's the comprehensive planning statute at the state level, and I'm quoting here, states that communities must address energy production and consumption in their comprehensive plans. Communities should address the topics energy conservation and solar renewable energy in their municipal comprehensive plan before adopting zoning requirements for solar systems. The, so I, I suggest that we, we start at the beginning with a comprehensive plan. I'd like to make another suggestion. I don't believe the ordinance, I think that the ordinance that is presented to us tonight is fixable. I think it'll need a lot of work, but one thing I'd like to do is make it consistent and in conformity with Land Use 2025. This is the state document, which is, which is the State Guide Plan on land use, and it, and it gets very specific about the town of Tiverton. It says that it envisions that everything south of Bulgamarsh Road in the town of Tiverton focus on agriculture and rural character, and that there certainly should not be any utility-scale solar projects. Well, we've got three of them now, so I, I think we really need to pay attention to this guide plan because our, what we do here in Tiverton should be consistent with state policy as well. So, I think that's, that's an issue we really need to address. A third point I'd like to make has to do with a brand-new document that has just been commissioned and by the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. It's called Solar Siting Opportunities for Rhode Island. It was done by an energy economics consulting firm up in Cambridge, Mass., and that it has very interesting, it has a lot of information that's very specific to the town of Tiverton, and it also has a very interesting conclusion which kind of supports what was said here earlier tonight. It says that, it concludes that "Tiverton and many other Rhode Island communities can generate all of the solar-based electricity they need without disturbing forests, farmland, and residential neighborhoods. And you can do that by citing solar panels on rooftops, brown fields, landfills, gravel pits, parking lots, and parcels of land currently zoned commercial and industrial." So, it can be done. We don't have to rip down our forests or cover over our prime farmland or, or put ugly solar arrays in residential neighborhoods. So, that's, I, I think we should focus the attention of solar developers away from our primary sources, our agriculture and forest resources, and away from neighborhoods, and point them in the direction of rooftops and disturbed land and, and other opportunities. So, but that's something we can discuss.
Stu, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
And the fourth, and my fourth suggestion is that we should not be overburdening the zoning board with special use permit applications. We should stay clearly in the ordinance where we want to see ground arrays, not just punt the decision-making over to the zoning board, because that's risky. When you do that, first of all, it's appealable to Superior Court, and you get it in Superior Court, the judge is eventually going to say, well, Tiverton, what have you got in your comprehensive community plan? The answer is nothing. The other reason it's dangerous is that, is that we're asking the zoning board to make decisions on a special use permit. They have six criteria. One of those six criteria that they have to consider and make positive findings on is, is it consistent with the comprehensive community plan? Clearly, it's not because there is no language in the comprehensive community plan. So, I would just say that, that we really need to take a look at not sending so much over to the zoning board with a special use, but making our own decision on where we'd like, like to see the ground arrays. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Is there anyone else?
Oh, I can give you...
If you can write your name down plus state at first.
I'm Jim Spears. I'm on the Historical Cemeteries Commission. However, I'm speaking partially as that, but also largely as a private citizen. I would like to suggest that the people that are going to be writing such an ordinance take a visit to the area where our only large-scale ground-mounted solar array system is currently placed, Wingover, the former Wingover Farm. If you look at several of the items that are called out in, in here, several of them, because they were not required of Amoresco, they simply are not met. So, they are real good examples of landscaping buffers. If you drive along Abel Heart Way, you'll find that, you know, these people have solar panels, you know. It, it looks like, but it's surely not as close from me to you as their property lines. There is a buffer, but it's minimal at best. Another area where they are, in my opinion, pretty guilty is in tearing down historic structures. There's no wording in here for protection of existing structures which may or may not have value. It could be that, you know, one of these is proposed for a place where there's a ramshackle barn of little value. That's one thing, but the Simmons House that was torn down is, was quite a different story. So, there are plenty of reasons why a visit to Wingover or just around it, where you'll be able to see, you know, all of these things. Another area where they, where they are very guilty of not doing the right thing is underground utility lines. If you look at the system, there's a huge array of utility poles, probably 60 or 70 feet tall, that start somewhere in the middle of it and go out to Crandall Road. So, here's an example of something in here. We were encouraging underground utilities. There's a good example of what it will look like if you don't require underground utilities. So, that's basically what I have to say, which is that we have a real good example of a system that is installed on a former cornfield. It's installed part of it on top of where the house used to be. It is close to a historic cemetery, and they have completely failed on their requirements to provide any maintenance and other features or other things that they were supposed to do relative to the historic cemetery. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. You can go next. No, that's okay. That's okay. Just trying to keep a little order, which we're doing very well.
You can see the score. You, you can see more of what's happening behind me than I can.
If you could write your name down and state it, please.
I, I will indeed do that. I'm Gail Lawrence, and I live on Long pasture Way, and I just want to say that I, I find myself personally aligned with almost everything that my fellow residents have said tonight. I really would like you to urge, I'd like to urge you to consider what Councilor Edwards proposed because to me, as I listen to the comments, it seems that further study can only be advantageous to us. Not delay, but thoughtful, intentional study because, as been pointed out, there are a lot of complexities to making this kind of ordinance meaningful for this community. I very much believe in renewable energy. I have solar panels on my home. We own an electric car. So, in no way do I want anything I say to suggest that I'm not in favor of alternative energy sources. What my spouse said is absolutely true. The climate crisis is upon us. We would be having our heads in the sand if we did not recognize the need to respond thoughtfully. And so, I hope that in the development of an ordinance, we can align with our comp plan, recognize the need to act thoughtfully and responsibly, preserve the trees we can preserve and the farmlands that we need for crop development. And in order to do that, I think pulling together as many experts and other concerned citizens as possible to form a committee that is dedicated to development of a, of a, a complete and thoughtful ordinance is an important responsibility to fulfill. So, that sounds like everything everyone else has already said. So, yes, I'm an echo of a sort. The other thing I'm thinking of as I sit here is, and this isn't tonight's issue, but it seems appropriate at this time to recognize as leaders of our community that we need to find every way possible to conserve energy in our town. Public buildings, have energy audits, take advantage of any programs that let us do that so that we reduce our carbon footprint as a community. And I know that that can happen, and I know that there are probably grants and funds to make that possible. So, I would just put that out there. And lastly, I want to know when, this is a question, at what point in this conversation is there an interaction with National Grid and the decision-makers in National, at National Grid? And the reason I ask that is because we are trying to increase the number of solar panels on our home because we have an electric vehicle, and we have been at least four rounds with National Grid. Most recently, they have denied our request because they don't have adequate capacity at their substation to take additional generation of energy. At least, that's what we've been told. So, that to me is something to find out about, and no developer, I, I wouldn't think any developer would go forward unless they had all their ducks in a row. But just, just a personal account of something that's making us frustrated. And, you know, we sincerely want to do this because we want to use renewable energy rather than fossil fuels. So, thank you for your attention, for your continued hard work to keep the quality of life in Tiverton high and to hold developers who want to maybe take advantage of us to account.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I really like the committee idea, Jay.
My name is Kate, Kate Nada. I'm a representative from ECOG Energie. Thank you all for listening to everyone's thoughts this evening. So, ECOG is very excited for, for this meeting to happen and to restart the conversation around the solar ordinance. As you may know, we've had two projects on hold for two years, our Life Raft project in addition to our church, church community housing project as well. So, like I said, very excited for this conversation to continue and to hopefully be a part of it. We are extremely ecstatic that the town council will hopefully pass a new ordinance. that the Town Council will hopefully pass a new ordinance that has taken all this dedication and thoughts from the community, specifically so that the solar systems can not only, the benefits can flow towards the property owners, but most importantly, like many have mentioned, the environment as well. In September, we submitted our comments, so I will be brief reiterating those, as you have all most likely read them. But, to voice our three top concerns, number one, we recommended the definition of solar, of the solar land coverage not to include the inner row spacing, as this would prohibit medium-scale systems, which is 250 KW DC or below, to be able to fit within the 40,000 square feet, 40,000 square foot limit. Point number two, in regards to Section 6, Point F, which states that, which as someone had mentioned earlier as well, that power and communication lines running between solar panels to the off-site electrical distribution system shall be buried underground. Just to kind of reiterate our point, National Grid does not allow developers to bury everything underground. For example, we may have a meter or a closer poles that must be overhead. We can only control our lines from the customer side, but not the utility side. So, this, the law that would be put in place would, we hope, would allow for this. And our point number three, to conclude, is decommissioning. The decommissioning plan states that a surety bond that covers the cost of removal and restoration of the site shall be required. It is from our experience that it is impossible to get a surety bond, a surety or a bond for a medium solar energy, which is the 250 KW DC or smaller. It would be impossible for, sorry, for a medium solar energy system, and therefore, it should be allowed to put up a cash deposit instead. Like I mentioned, we submitted our comments this past September. We really appreciate your time and your consideration of our comments, and it's been great to hear everyone from the community as well. So, thank you again for listening tonight, and happy holidays.
Kate, if you can just state one minute, I have two questions on your last comment.
Sure.
So, with a cash deposit, with a surety bond, I mean, obviously, it's a better protection for us. So, I'm concerned about a cash deposit.
Okay.
Secondly, coming from Pennsylvania, where there are lots of old strip mines that still are not restored back to pristine nature, and very different, I know, in terms of they create quarries that are dangerous and the like.
Yeah.
But, I would be hard-pressed myself not to push the envelope with the developers on property restoration, if we were to go in that direction with larger-scale or medium-scale developments. So, just, I want to be clear with that, with you as a developer.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate the feedback. I'll definitely take that back to my team. We're just truly speaking from our experience in this medium-scale size project. But, yeah, I appreciate the feedback, and I'll definitely share that with the rest of my team.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Oh, now I recognize you, but you still have to state your name.
Good evening. My name is Tricia Hilton. I live at 99 Peaceful Way. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to speak this evening. I originally came with something of a list regarding the existing ordinance, but having heard Counselor Edwards' recommendation, I prefer to speak to that, because I think it's a very, very good idea. I'm not going to restate, and I could, a number of reasons why I think the existing ordinance under consideration is inappropriate for the town, whether those are environmental reasons, agricultural reasons, and importantly, economic reasons. But, I have some history with this solar ordinance, having been in your shoes a number of years ago. And, the bones of this ordinance, the foundation of the existing ordinance is frankly outdated. It began in about 2016 or 2017, when the landscape for solar was remarkably different than what it is today, and the state was just stepping into this. There was a lot of encouragement to do it. And then came the law of unintended consequences, where multiple communities, including Tiverton, stepped into a solar ordinance only to find out that it was not at all what they wanted. What we've done is taken that ordinance and just tried to tweak it, and it really isn't going to work. And I can give you examples of other communities that are looking at this through an entirely different paradigm. So, instead of this model where you've got various-sized solar installations, and then you've got, you know, you've got zoning, and this is just one example, it may or may not fit in Tiverton, but many communities have adopted a model that is more focused on something that they call primary versus accessory solar. So, accessory solar, which is the easiest to understand, and is similar to what Gail Lawrence was talking about, is solar that allows a residence, an individual, homeowners, or businesses to install solar, rooftop, or possibly otherwise, that essentially makes them electricity-neutral. In other words, they follow National Grid's recommendations of 125% of your last three years' electric bill. And so, accessory solar is viewed in a different way than what's referred to as primary solar. And primary solar is the kind of large solar installation where you are selling significant amounts of energy back into the grid. So, these communities look at these kinds of installations differently, and therefore, they have different sets of requirements and regulations. And for people wanting to do accessory solar, the process is relatively simple and relatively easy, because it's something that allows a business or a community, you know, to address some of their own infrastructure costs, their electric costs, which is different than a commercial developer looking to make a profit. That's just one example of how other communities have moved way beyond the model that we're looking at. Since that model was developed, the older model was developed, the Office of Energy Resources, Rhode Island DEM, Grow Smart Rhode Island, as well as the University of Rhode Island, have done significant work in terms of appropriate citing of solar installations in both residential areas, as well as commercial and industrial areas. We're nowhere close to that with this ordinance. So, I really have to commend Counselor Edwards. I think it's a very good idea. I know that this has been kicking around for a long time, and folks would like to get it resolved, but I think that Tiverton's actually in a great position right now, because so much work has been done already. And there are communities that are well ahead of us in terms of a good ordinance, and frankly, it's free to steal good ideas from other communities. It won't cost us a penny. And there are resources out there. So, I do hope that Counselor Edwards will get support from the council to put together a small, some sort of small working group that can take advantage of, you know, Grow Smart's expertise, the University of Rhode Island's expertise, and look at ordinances, you know, from other communities, and come up with something that's going to fit here, that's going to be consistent with our community comprehensive plan, and that the community, you know, in large, will support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trish. Thank you for coming up. Can I ask you a quick question? And you can say you don't want to answer it.
Sure.
Stu Hardy had suggested that we first have to amend the comprehensive, or change the comprehensive plan. What's your perspective on that?
I agree with Stu that that is the state recommendation, and it should be done. I do not necessarily think that that needs to be an extremely onerous process. I actually worked on the last version of the comprehensive plan. I was one of the members, as was Stu. And it's not all that onerous, but it gives you a direction. It puts language in your comp plan that protects you in the future, should there be any litigation. I don't see why you can't do sort of both things in parallel at the same time. It's not necessary to say, well, we're going to amend the comp plan first, and get it approved by the state, and then we'll, you know. I think that you can do both things at once. As a matter of fact, we did that with the Tiverton Casino application, if folks remember. But, it is a good step to take, and I'm sure that Solicitor Marcello would tell you that if he ended up having to be in litigation, he'd be happy to have solid language in that plan to back him up. I also think that statewide planning, which is also taking some strong positions about citing of solar ordinances, would be more than happy to help us get something drafted. It's not going to be 12 pages of comp plan language. It can be pretty straightforward. So, I do agree that doing both at the same time is a good exercise.
Thank you. Anyone else? Susan? I think you were, you were up here earlier trying to figure out how to put your name in, so.
Susan Anderson. First of all, I agree with most everybody that's talked before me, so I'm not going to do anything else. However, just to stipulate with what Stu had done, I do have the Rhode Island Division of Statewide Planning, Comprehensive Plans and Solar Energy Systems, and it does say that the Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Regulation Act, Rhode Island General Law 45-22.2-6B8, requires that comprehensive community plans must consider energy production and consumption. And ours does not. So, I agree with him that it needs to be changed. It also says that the manual recommends, including actions within the implementation program that address conducting a baseline assessment of the amount of energy currently being used by municipal buildings, vehicles, and equipment, or if a baseline assessment has already been completed, conserving and efficiently using energy in public buildings, transportation, and equipment, and adopting zoning policies and citing standards for renewable energy production facilities. So, I mean, this is in the statewide planning system that Stu had mentioned before. I also agree that the, with Counselor Edwards, about the committee idea, the original solar ordinance was done in a subcommittee by the planning board, I believe, but as Ms. Hilton said, it is way beyond. It was years ago, and things have changed. However, let me suggest that we don't go through a committee just for a solar ordinance, that we have a renewable energy ordinance, which is not specific to solar, but includes solar, wind turbines, river turbines, which I've been after Tiverton, and I was talking to the, way back when, when we had an energy czar with the governor, on the river turbine at Stonebridge, because of that current that goes through, methane, you know, all types of renewable energy sources. I think that that should be within this one ordinance, and that the comprehensive plan should not just specifically include solar energy in it, but all different types of renewable energy. Because we do have, we do have wind turbines in this town, anyway. So, I think any, all of them should be addressed. I also want to add that when I went through the solar ordinance, and compared it with the comprehensive community plan, and what it lacked, I'm not going to go into particulars here, but I do want to mention, since I am the Chair of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, but I'm speaking as a citizen, I do want to say that the comprehensive plan says preserve the historic and architectural features, and the special areas of the community that contribute to its unique character. Now, the draft solar ordinance describes a very limited number of historic buildings in town to have roof-mounted solar panels. In reality, there are over 340 structures listed in town that were determined to be historic. They are listed on the town website, and within the building and planning departments, and the tax assessors office. All such structures need to have any roof-mounted solar panels not be visited, not be visible from the public right-of-way. And that is in the Department of the, Secretary of the Interiors...
Their guidelines.
Guidelines. Yeah, thank you. And so, those are what we have proposed for people to follow. Tiverton is a Preserve America community. I spent three years with Stu trying to get it to be such. We finally got it to be such, and we've been a Preserve America community since 2011, I believe. And we need to keep it being such by having our historic treasures visually seen as historic, not with visible, modern solar panels, or any other wind turbines, or anything else. That takes away from the historic character of this town. I think that's basically all I wanted to say at this point. But, I do want to recommend two people for the committee, Mr. Carden and Ms. Hilton, should definitely be on that panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else wish to be heard? Going to ask again, just want to make sure. Sometimes people are a little hesitant to get up. If you are, feel free to get up. As you see, we don't bite, especially with masks on. If not, I'm going to end, end the public portion of this and turn to our counselors. So, Counselor Edwards?
Okay. So, a comment was made about the composition of a working group, and who could be on it, and who could vote. And, we typically ask the solicitor to sit in on these kind of things, to give us legal advice, to help us smooth out verbiage, and how we write things. He's never a voting member, and we wouldn't ask him to be, and I don't think he would want to be. The planner would also be an advisor, because of her expertise in land use, and all things planning, and obviously, we would like people from the planning board, because they got a lot of knowledge on this kind of thing, and it's ultimately going to end up in their lap in a lot of ways. How many people we would ask to join us from the public, one thing I've learned over the years is, you can have a committee have too many people on it. It becomes unmanageable unwieldy, and you spend a lot of time spinning your wheels and not getting anything done. We would, my vision is that we would actively seek advice from people like Scott Millar, who's in a, from a unit called Grow Smart, or people from you or I have a lot of knowledge on this subject. Anyway, that's my vision, and that's what I will push for at the earliest opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor. I would only suggest that before, I assume you want this for the next meeting, which is December 13th, that you get with the solicitor, make sure it comports with the charter, so we don't run into any issues the way we structure it. Okay? Any other counselors wish to be heard on this?
Well, I would just like to say that a lot of what I heard tonight, I've been hearing, but there were also a lot of new ideas, new thoughts that I had not heard. And, I really don't know very much about solar, have been trying to educate myself, and have been talked to many of you, and some other people. So, I also love Jay's idea. And, I've also talked to some members of the community, and outside the community, who were not able to be present this evening, but have some valuable input. So, I think that having another session, so that, you know, we're coming up on the holidays, people may not have been available, so we can have some other ideas, too, and maybe some other members for a potential committee. But, thank you for all coming out and sharing your ideas. There's a wealth of knowledge in this room.
Thank you. Anyone else on that end, and I'll turn to Counselor Veer if he wants anything?
Good.
You're all good? You're all good? Counselor Vera?
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything prepared in regards to a speech tonight, but I really want to thank all of you for coming out. I think we're probably back at square one, and that's because of all of you and all of your feedback, and not just tonight, but over the past several months. So thank you. I think we have a feeling as to where we need to go, but it's probably somewhat of a longer road than we thought, and, but we'll get there, and I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and your feedback. Thank you.
So before we move on to the next item, I too want to thank you on behalf of the council for not only tonight, but also sharing your thoughts in the interim through the various means that I mentioned earlier. And I actually never thought that we, this would be easy. I don't see us back at square one, but I also have had 30 years of experience working on legislation for various things and know that drafting ordinances, drafting legislation is an arduous process. It's a, if it's done right, it's a back-and-forth process to try to make sure that as many voices can be heard and included in the final product as possible, and that at some point, even after the final product is, is voted on and passed and put into practice, we always have to come back to it and say, yeah, that's not working. How can we fix this? But knowing that we want to try to have a product that is as effective and as workable as possible so that any changes in the future would only be minor tweaks. So again, thank you, and we're going to move on to our next agenda item. And Administrator Kada is out tonight. I don't know if you have any information on Item B, Request Permission to Advertise and Hire a Land Use Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Just that we need to do a replacement for the land clerk, land use clerk. The job was posted, and there were no, no persons within the union that posted for the position. So that leaves that position open.
So it was posted internally, and now this is an external?
Yes.
Posting request. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made to give permission to advertise and hire a land use clerk by Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. And Madam Clerk, Request Permission to Advertise and Hire a Canvassing Clerk or Replacement Position?
So we have a retirement coming up. Leona Cook is retiring, and she's a pot-time tax assessor, pot-time tax collector clerk. So that was posted internally by the union, and the person that posted for that position was my canvassing clerk, Christine Miguel. That would take effect after Leona retires December 31st. So in preparation, we have, the union has posted the canvassing clerk position, and at this point, it could be another internal person who would fill that position, and that's why the, or replacement position is there. Since we're coming up on the holidays and we have only one meeting in December, December 13th, I wanted to get on this agenda so in preparation for whichever clerk or whatever replacement position is needed to fill so that we could go out for advertising and hiring.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant permission to advertise and hire a canvassing clerk or replacement position.
A second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Motion made by Counselor Perry. Any discussion? I just want to note, although this is, well, this is partially about her. I certainly appreciate the many, many years that Leona, and I think we all appreciate the many, many years that Leona has put in and given to this town, and many hours that were certainly not, she was not remunerated for. So please pass that on from us. Do I, all those in favor? And I don't think anybody, I think was unanimous from what I can see at this angle. Unanimous?
Thank you.
That was our last item. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Counselor Perry?
Motion to adjourn.
Counselor Vera, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you all again.
Thank you.